Okay, we're gonna start the town Sangerville special select board meeting Thursday, January 20, 2022. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
It's two after six. It's really, this is a budget meeting and on item two, budget. And we've got the fire chief with us and that's basically what we're gonna jump right into tonight is the fire department budget. We want to get fresh documents for all of us?
Fresh, yes. One oh four. Oh yeah, there you go.
Oh, I did notice, I don't know if you noticed, but the mailbox isn't in the sidewalk anymore.
Oh, I wonder if it got plowed over or just moved?
No, no, it looks like they, it's moved. They've kind of put it back into the driveway now, so.
Good. So where do you guys want to start here?
Tell me where else you think we can, do you have this list too of all the cuts that we made?
No, no, I mean, they know the from, from going from seventy-one down to the sixty-four.
I drew the start at this number right here.
Last year's total expended?
From budget, because that's kind of an issue.
The overage?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that, there's, that's, yeah, that's, even though it's, it's not a huge amount of money, we can't go over, so.
That's bad.
That's no different, honestly, you gotta, you gotta kind of think about this. This is no different than the checkbook.
Man.
When it's zero, it's zero.
Well, it's kind of actually worse than that, because if I go over my checkbook, I just gotta eat it, you know? But this, we can't really even do that. Now we have to go back to the town, say, we're really, really sorry, would you please give us the money? And they might say no.
When did it go over? Because I thought we was, I thought we were.
We were close and then when you, when you put in the fuel and the lights, in December, knocked it. Yeah, it was fourteen hundred dollars just for those, for the fuel and the.
Electricity and you said lights, but.
I meant to say fuel and then the gas and then telephone. Sorry, it wasn't lights, it was electricity. It was electricity. It was the oil, the ultra-low and the. That was fourteen hundred dollars alone, I guess.
So getting a, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna have to get together once a month so that, because I didn't even know we were kind of go over.
I didn't really until it happened.
Right.
I have a question. Would it be helpful, and I don't know, if you had to put a purchase order into Lorna prior to, so that she could say, uh, I don't know, or yeah, sure, but we got, and she could let you know where you were on these budget lines?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then, because if you're saying, I didn't know we're over, then, then, you know, we.
I do that every day at work. That's, that's a, that should be done.
Okay.
There's a paper trail tracking everything.
Yeah, I like it.
I like it too. That would be easier for you, you wouldn't have to worry about it. You see it coming in.
I would see it.
And then Lorna's the one who's the gatekeeper of saying, whoa.
And then you okay the purchase order and then we go.
Right.
And it's kind of double benefit. I mean, we, I, we look at this budget according to these, each one of these categories. And then you, you basically have kind of a bucket of money that you work from, but the categories matter. And so she's gonna be able to track that. She's gonna say, well, you know, this is gonna come from the equipment category. We've exhausted that. Do we really want to exhaust that? And you guys can have that conversation. I could see a scenario where she might say, I just want to talk to the select board before I do this. She might do that. So if you like that and she likes that, I think we like that.
I like that.
Okay.
Anyway, anyway, I'm a numbers guy. Anyway, we can track, I want to track.
Yeah, I think it's easier. You don't have to worry about it when you do it. She's gonna see it. She knows where to put it.
Right, right.
Because that would be my, I could see where if I was you, I might think about buying something and think it's going in this bucket and I'm okay. And then she's gonna put it into a different bucket and.
Right, and then, and I think there are a few people that on the department. In the past, it was easy for them just to go get something and not realize the cost. Eventually, that comes back to the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, we addressed that at the last meeting. Too many people spend, but that's been addressed and hopefully taken care of.
But that, that, that you, that even makes a gatekeeper for you and that whole, your whole department, you know, that, we gotta get a purchase order and, and then. So there's a process and I love that. Okay.
We can come up with a, with a purchase order system fairly simply.
Yep.
Fantastic.
So the other thing that we, let's keep going on what we talked about, I guess. We bounced around for quite a while, actually. Getting rid of the tank at the town garage.
I would love that.
Okay, and I did talk to A E Robinson in regards to the tank and we would get the same pricing anyways with the card as we would with the tank.
Right.
So we easily can swap that over. We would need, the cards would be issued by truck.
Truck, yes. Yes, because that gives us, right now, we're up there when it's ten below zero, two o'clock in the morning, we're soaking wet and we're trying to write on this.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, and it's all getting billed out to the fire department anyways because the ceiling wasn't using it.
Right, so I would, I would absolutely support going to cards.
Perfect.
Always fresh fuel, too.
To trucks.
Yeah, and you know.
We know it's good fuel, we know what it is.
You know, the pump's working.
You know Robinson's treats all their fuel, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll get together because Mike's the, the, the person that we want to work with and we'll get, you and I'll need to get together so that we can set that up for the cards with the trucks. And PIN numbers and all that, okay.
Do you want one for each truck? Or you just want general?
Well, if you have one for each truck, you can track the usage per trucks.
And he said A E Robinson, that's what Mike said, is they, they, that's how they did it, was by truck.
Yeah, so we just got more.
It's funny, we're working on this project at work right now and Deb's heavily involved in it where we've assigned thousands of credit cards. Everybody has credit cards. And now they just changed it to where everybody's PIN number is the unit that they're filling up. So if you're filling up truck number zero, zero, one, 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 that's your PIN number. And that's how they're gonna start tracking the fuel through everything.
Ah, that works. That's good.
Yeah, it needs to be tracked.
Yep, yep. Good.
We're gonna roll.
Yeah, and I already called the, I, I sent an email out to the insurance company in regards to if we remove the tank, the mobile equipment. And so that's all, I'm just waiting for them to get back to me. So that's all in the works. So we'll have that answered by now hopefully.
Who, who owns that tank? Do we own that tank?
Yep.
Oh, we do. So we should sell it.
Yes, definitely.
Good, good.
The big, the, well, yeah, the, the biggest shift was in wages versus budgeted and versus expended the previous year. That one kind of jumped out at us because we've been under the impression that we probably had fewer people than we had, say, three, two, three, four years ago. And that was a thirty percent increase in wages.
Yeah, so the huge one there is in our training. And we've opt training. I don't understand.
That's a break though.
Yeah, I'd like to, I want to try to figure this out because there's a hundred and twelve hour difference between two thousand twenty and twenty-one for meetings.
Yeah, well, that's.
That I don't, that I don't understand. So maybe I need to go back through and really look at those harder because that doesn't make any sense to me how we went a hundred, I mean, we meet once a month.
Right.
For a couple hours, maybe three if it's really.
So you pay everybody the whole time there for every meeting?
Everybody gets paid for the two hours that they come to the meeting and the two hours for training. But the way that's always been.
How's the Sunday payroll? How many hours of, I mean, you gave me that, that sheet, that show.
Sunday duty, you got a minimum of three and a maximum of five.
And how many hours are they supposed to do on Sunday?
People are hours, sorry.
That's it. No hours.
Hours, okay.
A minimum of three, maximum of five.
For how many people?
Uh, well, this is the Sunday duty roster right here, so most of them are all three people.
I see.
This one only has two, this one only has two, but I only have two now too because we lost a few guys.
So, and you rotate this Sunday duty?
Yeah, so every Sunday.
I see.
So these, these three guys are on duty.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, I see.
Each weekend's covered.
I see. So minimum of three, maximum of five hours.
Yeah, yeah. And that covers you being on duty all weekend long.
So between meetings, training and Sunday duty, that's your budget. That's half your budget. So that's close.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this, especially in two thousand twenty-one.
That just sounds way excessive.
Nine hundred and sixty-five fire call hours.
Yes.
In a total of two hundred and eighty-seven hours.
Two thousand eighty-seven, yeah.
Yeah.
It should, I mean, we had almost a fifty percent increase in meetings and a twenty-five percent increase in training. That's incredible.
The training, I can understand because in two thousand twenty-one, we sent guys to that basic firefighter school training, which would have jumped that. I don't understand how this is possible. Hundred and thirty-three hours in two thousand twenty and two hundred and forty-six in two thousand twenty-one.
Because you have the same sort of meeting schedule from.
Same sort of meeting schedule and roughly the same amount of people, I mean, give or take.
I will tell you that we had a lot of issue with payroll in two thousand twenty.
I, I don't think that this hundred and thirty.
With some of the.
I, I don't think that number's accurate.
Oh, you think that was low?
Yeah, it's low. I mean, so you got, if you have twenty guys, forty hours a month. Yeah, that's low.
And Chad, the.
Except it matches previous year.
Well, is it unrealistic to think somebody was just looking at previous numbers and checking things off? We did have a big struggle not too long ago, so you have, and that was before I was chief, but that's neither here nor there. I mean, forty times twelve, that's four hundred and eighty hours. If you had twenty people for two hours a month, you're up four hundred and eighty hours. So a hundred and thirty-three is pretty unrealistic. I mean, even ten people for two hours exceeds that number.
So.
I just think it's a lot.
I think, I think that two thousand twenty-one is much better tracked and much more accurate.
Yeah, we had a lot.
Two thousand twenty's numbers. That's that. I mean, you can go back probably sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty and see that they're very inconsistent.
Inconsistent?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because of bookkeeping?
I don't, I don't know. I didn't, I can't give a reason why. I just know that it was inconsistent.
The new, the new system that they had though, two thousand twenty-one worked well. We were given it monthly and I would put the numbers in and they would match.
It's accurate.
So it was accurate. It was a much more accurate account.
But there were more people. There were more fighters in nineteen than there are today.
Fire calls?
More personnel, personnel.
Oh, more firefighters?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably pretty close to the same in nineteen.
Okay.
In nineteen, that's when, eighteen and nineteen is when we had the big infamous meet and move.
But that's when we didn't have enough firefighters.
We didn't have enough firefighters for old trucks.
That's what I'm saying. The numbers were extremely low.
Our roster was low. I mean, I think at one point it was down to twelve.
So maybe, I mean, I, maybe that's where the extra money's come from.
Our, our roster right now is, is pretty significantly, it's, it's really good compared to the last five years. I can't give you the exact numbers. I don't have them. But I know we have more right now, and that's including the two we just lost, than we've had in years past. And I can go down through this list. James Sherbin, a woman just came back, Jake, Travis Giles, Travis Labrie, Michelle Labrie, Mason, Matt, Gerald, Chris, Beth and Kira. I mean, there's, there's seventy-five percent of the department with three years of or less.
Hmm, honestly, just sitting here, I think paying two hours for two meetings a month, three to five hours for Sunday duty, I think that's a lot of labor.
One meeting a month.
I think it's a lot of labor.
No, not two meetings a month. I mean, yeah.
I mean, every, I'm looking at is every time you guys have a call, when you come back, you clean everything, you get your trucks back in service, you're ready to roll.
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
So what's three to five hours on Sundays?
Cleaning, starts, everything gets started, everything gets checked, every siren, every light, every oil dipstick. We were very thorough so that when we show up on scene, it's working. Bumps get started.
But you do that when you get out back from your call?
Yeah, if there could be a month in between them. I mean, you know as well as I do, if something's set for a month, it might not start, you know, go into your shed and grab your chainsaw. We, we struggle with them on a regular basis.
I don't, I just, it's a lot.
Is it, is that standard? I mean, is that this, or is.
It's always been, ever since I've been on, it's always standard. What other departments are, I couldn't tell you. No, I have no idea. I mean, I know that most everybody has checklists of some sort that they follow because there's nothing more really than.
Right, typically, that's basically what an officer's responsible for, whatever, whatever title and this is their, what they're kind of overseeing or.
In a way, yeah, and that's kind of how Sunday duty works as an officer in charge each weekend to make sure that everything gets, everything gets checked. Everything's working, everything's fueled up, nothing's come up amongst the missing, which we have not had an issue with that in a long time. To, to do away with Sunday duties, we didn't, you know, I could make it, I'd be willing to cut it back to say, you have to do it in three hours, no more five hour stints. I think the majority of everybody's doing it in three hours. But I think it's extremely important to do it every week. It holds people accountable, it keeps people in town. We know that these three guys right here are gonna be in town this weekend, so the pumper's gonna roll and somebody's gonna be on the radio.
You know they have the three hours.
No, 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 Sunday duty starts at, uh, weekend duty starts Friday night and ends Sunday night. Friday night is six to Sunday night is six.
Oh, so they're on.
They're on duty. If, if I leave town on my duty weekend, I'll call Jeff, I'll call one of the other officers and say, hey, I'm gonna be out of town, you're gonna be around. There's, we're always communicating on the weekends so it's at least three people so that a truck can roll and one person can get other departments coming. And that's been like, I mean, that must've been like that when you was on.
Not when, not when I was in Guilford, we didn't do that.
Oh, no, not in Guilford. I thought you was on Sangerville. Oh, you was never on Sangerville?
No.
So this is really an on-call schedule as well. I mean, this is not just going in and doing your three to five hours of.
You have, you have, your, the expectation is that you're in town and ready to respond to a call. And if you're not in town, then you need to let somebody know so somebody else is in town.
Yeah, it's like physicians.
Last weekend, Chris called me, had to go to Bangor to fix his daughter's, whatever it was. Are you gonna be around? Yep, I'm ready to watch the football game, I can cover, so.
Yep, yep.
And that happens almost every weekend.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not looking to cut anything. I'm just looking, how do we trim? How do we shave? I mean, if you look at everything we're trying to do, we're trying to get numbers as tight, as lean as we can.
Right, so, I mean, like I said, I'm willing to, because, because I think that most everybody does their Sunday duty in three hours. I think that's why we went back to, we, we cut it back to three hours. Oh shit, that must've been fifteen, sixteen.
If you've already done it, it's not really a cut.
But we didn't cut it.
No, what I'm saying, if, if you're saying that majority of everybody were already there, saying you're gonna go to that, it's not really.
Well, making it, making the three hour mandatory, so I don't know how many five hours ones there were. I didn't go track them.
Right.
Um, the, the idea was that most everybody is doing, is done within three hours. So to make them stick around and clean the station for two extra hours is just a waste of time and a waste of money.
So Chad, this group that's on call for this weekend, those, that three are the ones that are going to then do their two, three, two hours of starting everything, fueling, okay?
Yeah, and they can do it anytime. It's always been called Sunday duty, but they can actually do it anytime.
Do they typically do, would these three work together?
Usually.
Okay.
Unless there's a.
Right.
Different circumstance that comes up. I might call and say, hey, I'm not gonna be around tomorrow, but Chris is gonna be covering me and I'm gonna do my Sunday duty today and I'll go in through the air packs.
But this isn't new. We've done this.
This has been like this for.
Right, so that's, I'm still having a hard, I'm just not getting my arms around the thirty percent increase.
Well, but Chad's saying that he, you don't think that this is accurate, twenty twenty is accurate.
Well, the, the money went out.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Unless you're saying that people didn't get paid and they were supposed to, but I got a feeling if, if people were shy, six thousand dollars, they'd know it.
Be squawking.
And, and it's happened not, it happened year after year.
Well, I mean, how many years can we go back? Can you have that information?
Well, we got at least two years where we were able to get by with under twenty-five and this year we're banging up against thirty and next year you want thirty, so.
Well, what, okay, yeah, and then there's been quite a significant minimum wage increase.
Yeah, I, that's, there's a kind of explanation that, exactly, but not thirty percent. It's probably been two or three or four, I don't know, but.
No, minimum wage went up fifteen cents in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two it's gone up sixty cents.
So, you know, a dime here, a dime there, but that doesn't explain thirty percent of wage increase.
That's not a thousand bucks.
No.
I think some of them.
Sixty cents, sixty cents would be.
Sixty cents, it went up this year, right?
It went up sixty cents this year.
I think it's Sunday pay.
Yeah, just times your, all your hours, right?
Fifteen hundred, or whatever, two thousand eighty-seven.
But you had, you had one from nineteen to twenty and we went down. I mean, minimum wage has gone up every year for the last four years.
I, I, I mean, I don't have an explanation, Brad, because I'm looking at my first year. All I can tell you is that in two thousand twenty-one, things were tracked diligently. We worked with Bridie, we brought Deb on, worked with Lorna, and everything was tracked diligently.
And it came, and when I double-checked it, it was correct. Definitely.
Why, why the, why the huge increase? The only one I can account for is trainings. I mean, you just saw the numbers, obviously, a hundred and thirty-three. Well, a hundred and thirty-three in two thousand twenty, we were shut down for.
Yeah, pandemic, yeah.
We didn't do any meetings for most six months. We didn't do any, hardly any trainings. We weren't allowed to gather at the station. The only time we were allowed to go to the station is if we had a call and that was it.
Did you continue though, your Sunday, maintain everything on, in twenty?
No, we shut Sunday duties down for quite a while.
But we spent the same amount of money as we did in nineteen.
Yeah.
On the.
I mean, yeah, that's, I, that, I, you, that make, your point is valid. I kind of forgot, I'm sure there was a lot less meetings in twenty because of the pandemic. But our total expenditures were almost identical to nineteen. We didn't save any money.
So think about that for a minute. What did we have for, when you did all that, did we have any major issues?
When was that?
When you had, yeah, when you couldn't meet, you couldn't do Sunday duty, nobody was at the station.
No, I wouldn't say we had any major issues.
Okay, so just think about that for a minute.
I, I.
You know where I'm going?
I fully know where you're going.
Okay. No, I'm not saying I want you to cut all that stuff out either, but how can we trim some of that out, you know?
So do we do, do we look at doing Sunday duty once, once a month?
Question?
Because I mean, that's.
Well, you've already gone from five to two hours. There's a.
Three.
Five to three, so maybe, maybe you do three once a month. I mean, you know it, I don't.
Every, every other weekend? I mean, I'm willing to try anytime.
I am too. I, I just trying to figure out how can we all talk about this, look at things differently, and how can we trim it? The other thing that, as we're talking, what I'm wondering about is should you put a sub line under your wages and salary, break out training? And then you actually budget that, hey, I've got five thousand.
Dollars for training? Yes.
I only have five thousand dollars I can spend this month on training. If I want to send five guys to firefight a fight, you know what I mean? This is all I can afford to do.
No, I, yeah, the answer to that, in my opinion, is yes. If you can break it down and know how much, if I can look at a number and say, okay, this is how much I have for training. And yet, no, I would, that I agree with a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I think it'd be easier.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably gonna make you more effective too.
Because we can go, when we're getting towards the end of the year, hey, we're getting short on our training budget, guys. It's time to cut back. Or, or we know the cold months are coming up, so let's cut back there. We have ex monodolos, so let's ramp it up in the summertime. I'm good, I'm, I would be really good with doing that.
Separate line between them.
Um, when laws were talking about lines, so the equipment, we had seven thousand budget for equipment. You, you've spent less than half of it. Now, all of that ended up going over to wages, so we spent our bucket. But now, this year, we got a big bump up to nine thousand in equipment.
Yeah, so, um, let's see if I can, did I tell you how much I was on for the bottles?
Yeah, I probably have less on there.
Of course, I can't think of that guy.
I think it's seventy-eight hundred.
Seventy-eight hundred, so we already have Luke Fire Safety. So we need to replace eight bottles and that's, we need to replace twelve bottles. The bottles, the prices of bottles have gone through the roof, so the quote, oh, is seventy-three. So right now, a bottle is nine hundred and fifteen dollars a piece. So when I got the number of bottles, I said, well, we can cut out four because we really only need eight.
How many you have total?
How many bottles do we have total?
Yeah.
Counting our old steel bottles?
Whatever you have that's passable.
That you would.
That you could use.
Grab and use.
Two, three, four, five, six.
If you had to.
Seven, eight, okay, one. We have, we have twelve right now.
You have twelve good ones?
No. We have six good ones and twelve of the old steel bottles.
They're not inspectable?
They're, they def, they never have, they don't have a shelf life and they don't, they don't expire. They're old, they're heavy, they're ergonomically incorrect and they don't fit in our, they work.
They don't fit in your jumpsuits and your axe?
No, they don't fit in the packs. I mean, they do fit, but they're very tight and they're, they just need to be faded out. They really just need to go away altogether. And it's not gonna be long before the NFPA says we can't use them anyway. They're about thirty pounds heavier than the other ones.
Whoa.
I remember, when I, honestly, when I was on, that's what we used and the, the new carbon fiber bottles, we had a few, but those were like.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That was the.
So how many other good ones do we have? You said, you said six?
Yep.
How many, how many fighters do we have that are certified to put on a bottle?
I don't know, let me tell you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
So about half of them are gonna get better bottles.
It's what, it's not, it really, it really doesn't work that way.
I mean, you'd never put twelve on them.
No, no, it's not all, it's not all using it at one time.
Right.
When you come out, you get to a truck, you take your fifteen minute rest, whatever, there's different names for it. You switch your air bottle out and you can go back in. You can only go in twice. You get two thirty minute rounds and that's it, you're done for the night. You don't get to go back in. So it's just a matter of being able to bring the empties out and while the other guys are in there fighting, we have the mobile cascade system. And then we, we fill the bottles back up so that they're ready to go for the next crew that comes out.
So what about, what about incrementally replacing bottles over a longer period of time?
Should be the way that it, that's the way that it needs to be. And I think that's the way it was supposed to have been set up and I don't know if they.
You've got six good ones. You need at least another six more to replace the twelve that are kind of obsolete. Is that.
The twelve that just went out are all carbon fiber bottles, they're the good, light bottles.
Those ones, are you saying those ones have a date?
Yep, those ones have a date.
So the.
So you should be filtering them out.
So one thing, I'm gonna say this, and this is before, actually, you was a part of this, before we were selecting. Back before, years ago, when we was on budget committee, we had the, these type conversations almost every year, all the way back through to then, with the fire department. And suggested then, you guys really ought to have an inventory list and you ought to say, this is what I have, this is when my expire. And how do we get on something for a rotation so we don't get hit with twelve at once? You know what I mean?
All right.
Same way with everything else.
Because, I mean, we, I look at that and say, okay, they only spent half what we gave them last year on equipment and this year, they want thirty-five percent more than what we budgeted last year. It's like, that doesn't seem like there's a rhyme or reason to it.
And I, I guess that it's only spending half last year. When we made equipment purchases, is that definitely where it came off of, that line? I mean, it.
It looks like it all went to wages. There's no other place.
Well, the dollar, the, the budgeted number went to wages.
Right, the budgeted number, but it did, it, it says that's, that's what we expended. That's what we used off of that line.
Right.
Right, um, where's, what shows me that, that we didn't buy a piece of equipment that came off a different line on accident or something to that effect? And I don't, I'm just asking, I'm on a car.
No, no.
No, I, I get what you're saying.
You can break that down.
Yeah, for us, it's, I mean, yeah.
And we're really not, we, we, I think, we still kind of view this as a bucket of money. At the end of the day, if, if you say to Lorna, you know, I need, you know, I'm gonna do training and, and she says, yeah, but you, you're out of training money. It's okay, as long as we don't go over, uh, it's, you know, we gotta get close.
It just makes it harder for this process.
Yeah, this process is painful if we don't have. Yeah, this process is painful if we don't have a, a system. Because of, if last year, now, obviously, we would have been, we would have been over on wages anyway, but if you had spent the seven. You probably wouldn't need nine this year.
If we had bought the bottles.
Yeah.
Cause we would have been.
Right, we've already started the process.
But that's a bad part. I mean, we're looking at this right now, we budgeted fifty-five, we're going to sixty-four, but the reality is, you're gonna take seventeen eighty-two. And add to the sixty-four, because that's what we gotta ask for. We're not asking for sixty-four, we gotta pay for this number on top of that number. That's the bad thing.
And again, I, I'm beginning, that's a twenty percent increase in our firefighting budget in one year.
Yeah.
That's, that's not a trend that's sustainable.
Well, it's not sustainable in one year. I don't know how to fix it, I'm just saying. So, all right, let's just. I think if, could you look at numbers, Chad, and see? If we could break down your labor from last year, or maybe you actually have it so you're comfortable. Can you look at, actually, figure out what you spent out for training last year? And then say, okay, I spent, this is what I spent X, you know what you did with it. See if you can trim that number and then think about the Sunday duty roster the same way. If you go every other week or however you can try to do that, I think you can take this thirty thousand number and that can come down. By just those two things.
It probably can.
Okay, so I think that would help. And then for me, the electric, you're working on that, right?
Right, and it, yeah, it's down to twenty-five, but trust me, that, that's as low as I think we can really go.
Okay, just asking.
Everybody knows everything's more expensive. Everybody knows that. Not gonna, I mean, we can ask for more money, that's, but it's just gotta be.
It's just gonna, well, the problem is, we went by last year's budget because of the pandemic and it's gonna be pretty hard not to have a decent increase this year. On top of everything else. What about line one fourteen?
Yeah, because they're, those two are old school.
Yeah, yeah.
And they were against letting people do it in three to begin with.
Your, uh, Dale's reference, one fourteen, your building maintenance?
Do you know of anything big or in particular you have to do this year? I mean, I know it's standard, we've always budgeted two thousand.
Yes, well, I, I, I guess, no. If you go look at that back wall.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Every year, every year.
Yeah, it's been fixed more than once, I believe.
It needs to be fixed, like, fix, fix.
It was an engineering disaster.
Yeah, it's terrible. It needs to be, and you, you need to go up to the first purlin, cut all the metal off and pour concrete all the way up.
That's the right answer.
That's the only way.
Do that for two grand.
No, you're not gonna do that for two grand.
What it needs is insulation. If the roof was insulated, it wouldn't fill full of ice and fall off and bust.
Well, you got a metal roof, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's coming off, no matter what.
Right, but it's not, it's the ice is doing it.
Well, because it sits there and melts and turns into ice and crushes your wall. You can't, you better get the snow away.
I have metal roof on three, six, on thin chip, and it doesn't do that.
You can't let it pile up against your building.
There's a, well, there's also discrepancies in how it happened too, because when we found the big disaster. It was right after a wet, heavy snow and somebody blistered through there with a plow. Plain and simple. And it was rolled right up onto our wall and that wall was.
Buckled right in.
Buckled, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, I really don't, I don't necessarily think it comes from the snow coming off the roof as much as, I mean, that certainly could play a.
Wasn't properly removed.
It wasn't properly removed.
Uh, so is it, is it, uh, open to the outside? I mean, is it watertight?
It's not watertight, no, no, it's caulked and fixed the best that we can get it.
Oh, boy. Um, does that still get plowed?
I don't know that.
It's not our property, two feet off that wall.
Does it need to be plowed? Wow.
It's not our property.
Okay, so we shouldn't be plowing.
No, but I mean, you know what I'm saying, it's not a, you don't have any say in this.
I, I'm not saying it was, that a town member.
No, no, I know, you're just saying, no, no, great, no, no, I know, I know.
But even for us, I mean, it's not our, we shouldn't be plowing it.
No, and they got, and just, right, just sold and there's new people living there. Cause I always say, oh, my gosh, that's nothing.
Well, either way, this entire conversation, two thousand dollars ain't gonna do anything.
No, it isn't. It's not, that's, yeah, that's.
So if we're not gonna do anything, and if there's nothing else to talk about.
It's probably gonna be similar to the last few years, which is, maybe if you figure five hundred bucks, you're probably fine.
Two, two thousand dollars in far as building maintenance is gonna cover replacing the, the lights and. Little stuff like that.
You did three hundred bucks last year.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't.
Six hundred, four hundred, I mean, that's, I mean, I think five, six hundred bucks is probably, unless you know of a project you're gonna do on it. You're just doing regular routine piddly light bulbs.
I mean, I, and the, the ultimate goal would be to work through this FEMA grant and. Have a brand-new one within the next five years.
Brand-new building.
Yeah, but that's a whole nother argument for a different time.
So what could we do there to help lower your, your total? I mean, could that be five hundred bucks? Could it be seven fifty?
That could be five hundred.
Five hundred, all right, so that's fifteen hundred.
Because that would take care of, uh, replacing the. Halogen crappy fluorescent lights with the LEDs that we were talking about. So, I mean, that's another thing. So if we, if we go buy light bulbs. You just get the receipt and you automatically put it on building.
I, yeah, I, I look.
So right now, you're playing a guessing game.
I'm guessing game, correct.
So that needs to come to an end.
Right. The purchase order's gonna take care of that, cause we're gonna know a bucket to take it out of. Yeah, so there's no question. And there'll be a limit to who will be picking them and stuff up, yeah. But, yes, in the past, we, that's what we did, is, okay, you had to like, okay, was this for a vehicle, was this for the fire stations now?
So when we talked, the last time you was here, we talked a little bit about the old brush truck. Did you get a chance to find out anything about that? And here's why I'm saying that, the next line down, we're, is auto insurance is right here. If that's something that you don't use, you don't need, if we can get rid of it, and that can drop that insurance number down.
Yeah, get it off.
Yeah, I would, I would think for the year of that, that's probably up there on the insurance, but maybe it isn't, I don't know.
I have no idea what they would charge for, for insurance, but I have no problem. And I really, this should be a, a fire department conversation that I have with all the members, but. I have no problems taking that truck off the roster.
Just gonna find out through forestry service if it's theirs or yours.
I don't know who it is, yeah.
That's just a phone call.
That's that truck that's up in the town garage right now?
The one with the big army truck.
Cause really, after that one, the equipment line is the only, the equipment line is the big number. That's the one that's hurting.
Well, I, this is just a wish thing. I, I, I took, took wages and salary to twenty-six thousand, there's a ten percent increase over last year. We've agreed that you probably can get by with five hundred on building maintenance, because that's ridiculously more than you spent last year. Hopefully that works. Uh, and then take the equipment number back to seven thousand, which we had, you know, allocated last year. See how that works, maybe don't get all the bottles this year.
If we take it back to seven thousand, and even if we cut the bottles in half. That's gonna leave me about two thousand dollars for equipment. So I guess, I guess what I need is, is definition on equipment. Is that all gear, everything that goes on the trucks?
But wait a minute.
We're not gonna know the difference. If you tell us that's what it is, that's what it is.
It has to be, well, I mean, you've, just look at your titles, I would say.
But Mike, you said seven thousand on equipment.
Take the nine down to seven, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Which is what it was last year.
Right, and to get my bottles is gonna be seventy-three hundred dollars.
Well, but maybe we don't get them all this year.
If we get to eight. So if we cut it to four.
You said nine fifteen a bottle, right?
Yeah, nine fifteen a bottle.
So that would be thirty-six. That still leaves you thirty, thirty-three or so.
Thirty-four hundred.
Basically, uh, those are the only three, the, so there's four, six, that's seventy-five hundred dollars off the sixty-four, but that, we gotta throw. Our overage back on there.
Yeah. What is the overage? How much is it? Is it sixteen, seventeen hundred?
Seven, well, eighteen hundred.
Oh, yeah, okay. So we have to add that on there.
So let's think about your, your equipment, though. You didn't buy any bottles last year, you probably didn't buy any the year before, right? So you're in that three thousand, thirty-four hundred range, actually nineteen was twenty-six hundred. So.
Yeah, see, there again, that, uh, we keep referring back to it, but this is where the PO thing. Next year's meeting, when we sit down and do this, and we have everything that, that is, that I consider to be accurate. Cause I don't understand how that's accurate.
No, I agree with you. I think, I think that's gonna help. It helps the whole process, everybody understands everything.
Because when we get things.
What do you call under, I'm curious, what do you call under mobile equipment?
I, I consider that to be radios, pagers, stuff to that effect.
No, to me, I would put that down under radios. That's why, uh, that's why I'm asking, what's, what is, what is we considering under the mobile equipment line?
Cause are you still using pagers or are you, you're now all on your cell phones?
No, we still use, uh, we still have Plectrums. We haven't completely outsourced them, but we haven't really replaced any. The only thing we have right now is radios and this year we got a new EMA director, Tom Carone got done. And she's getting us, I think she said, s- uh, six or eight brand-new radios. And a dozen pagers through the, through FEMA.
Oh.
So, so that, that's why I, I brought that one down. That's the one I cut down, I took a thousand sixty off it. Uh, when I was looking at mobile equipment, that's what I was thinking about, was radios. So why that line down below has radios and we don't have.
Right.
I, I don't, I couldn't tell you that.
So the other thing too, whatever this says within some, you can change that verbiage.
Right, yeah, yeah, you can change your line.
You know what I mean? So as you're getting more into this, working with her on POs, you could.
We can work together on it.
We can change the line, yeah, so that really, really works for you.
The person, when they put, originally put in mobile equipment, what they meant by that, I have no idea.
Right.
Well, I'm just curious what we're putting, what that two thousand sixty is, because honestly, that's about what we've spent every year, it's two thousand sixty.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, look at that. Wow, almost spot on.
Sixty.
It's close.
Yeah, I, I.
Do you have subscriptions for mobile equipment? You know what I mean?
No.
Like a monthly charge?
I, I really don't know. I really have no idea.
Well, the only reason why I'm questioning it, why I'm really scared, is because we've only got a thousand budgeted, like you said, and if that's really something, there's gonna be two. That's what I'm saying.
So on the original one, the proposed was the twenty-sixty, I read mobile equipment as the radios. So I knocked a thousand dollars worth of radios and pagers that we're gonna be getting from, uh.
FEMA.
FEMA. So that's a great question, maybe that is a, maybe it needs to be two sixty.
And maybe you don't need the radio line anymore. Or if you wanna call it mobile equipment, that's great, well, scrap the other one. So where did your math bring you to?
If I, if, if my target is a ten percent increase in our firefighting budget or sixty thousand dollars. And I gotta, I gotta cover the seventeen hundred from last year, the only place I can see it is. Twenty-six thousand on wages, salaries, uh, five hundred on building maintenance and seven grand on equipment. If we, if we agree to those three numbers and then I add back the seventeen that were over this year, we hit sixty like right on the money.
Is that right?
Yeah, and that's, that is, that's, that's a ten percent increase in our firefighting budget. And, and, it is a lot, but, and even that feels like it's kind of a struggle.
Yeah, because I mean, the fifty-five was up.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't wanna go back and tell you what the increase is from nineteen.
You know that number?
Well, no, it's here, we know what we expended.
The budgeted number was.
Yeah, yeah.
So last year, we went from forty-nine, two thousand twenty, we went from forty-nine thousand, nine twenty-eight to fifty-five thousand even.
Yeah.
In what?
No, fifty, no, expended.
No, we budgeted fifty-five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we wanted fifty-five.
I know, but we didn't.
Oh, we didn't hit it.
No, we didn't hit it.
No.
So if, if, if we budget, uh, fifty. Fifty-eight, three, and then pay for last year's overage, we come in at sixty grand.
Right. But really, all you have is fifty-eight, three.
Correct.
Yeah. Mobile equipment, I'm almost thinking, is an insurance line. Uh-huh, see that?
It looks pretty, it looks like.
Yeah, it's too close not to be something like that.
Yeah, it's, I believe it's an insurance line. Same with the mobile equipment. Right, right, right. But it'd be nice to, if you could have an insurance line and then break it out. It is, it's mobile fire equipment, that's what it is, it's the insur.
So that covers our mobile equipment, is that, is that the insurance?
That's insurance. So that is, so we can't really, it has to be, it has to be.
So this whole thing gets sketchy, cause we have a lot of things that we really don't know what.
Right.
And this would be one of them.
So that needs to be fixed.
If you've got, all your stuff is, all your stuff is insured anyway. I mean, it's all vehicles.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if mobile equipment is, is insured separately, then that's information that I have to have that I didn't know. Because if you bring a broken radio to me and I say, oh, man, this sucks, and I say, oh, I, I pay to have it replaced.
Right, and you have insurance.
Or lost tool or.
Stuff like that.
So I'll reach out again to find out about the mobile equipment for the fire department, so that line has to be twenty-sixty.
Are right through.
Main municipal, yeah.
Is it possible to have somebody come here and explain all of our insurances to us?
I'd love to be in on that, I mean.
I can check with her tomorrow. Cause that's a lot of insurance too, that's a, that's a eight-dollar amount.
Clearly, it's insurance that we're not using.
Exactly.
And we should be using.
It, cause you haven't, you didn't even know you had it.
They didn't even know I had it. No, absolutely.
But the other side of it is, oh, you.
Unless it's something liability related.
Right, right.
That's what I, yeah.
Well, that would be the benefit of having somebody come explain.
Definitely, we need to know what we're paying for, but that may explain why you haven't used it.
Cause I don't even, that, that, that's what, I guess, that's kind of frustrating from my aspect is, I don't even know what I have.
Right.
And that's, that's a piss-poor way to run a business and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Why would I raise a hand? Cause we don't know either, when it comes to insurance.
No, and I've already been sending out questions all week, so I'll send some more. But that's what that is, that's why it's twenty-sixty. Here, you're thinking that's money you have to spend on radios.
Right, yeah.
So your radios really are radios and cell phones.
Cell phone we scratched.
Yes, we did. So get rid of that line, totally, I'll get rid of the line.
I feel like I'm double-dipping, because I don't pay for this. Jim broke his for that.
Oh, yeah, wow.
Well, if I remember right, that number was for the, didn't you have a cell phone in two of your trucks? That's what we were always told. That was not for a chief's cell phone.
That's what's, that's what it was for, that's what I was told.
No, it wasn't.
Twenty dollars, um, they got twenty dollars a month.
That was ended a long time ago.
Well, it didn't.
Well, it's ended for sure now, cause we scratched it.
It's nice.
Yeah, I don't know what it was in the past.
That was ended way before you.
We don't have any cell phones on our trucks.
Cause everyone has his own, right?
That's what we were told. No, I'm just saying, your cell phones in the rescue.
Yeah, I remember that, I remember that.
There's two cell phones, right? One in the rescue and one in something else.
I remember that.
Yep, that's what that number was for, what they needed it for.
How many year, how many years ago did that start? Just curious.
For us to end that, was it three years ago?
Well, they.
I've been sitting here six, so it's been within five, but, but it wasn't further back than five years ago.
I remember the discussion, and I've been here less time than you.
This is five, four, five years ago.
That's what, that's what Bridie told me when I first started, that I get a cell phone.
Twenty dollars a month, twenty dollars a month, so it was a stipend. It was a stipend.
That's why we ended it.
Ah, but that's what that is.
Okay.
So you're not paying it anymore to anybody? No. Okay, okay. Should be up until the end of the year, yes. Oh, up until the end of this? Two thousand twenty-one, yes. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, there you go. So it was a, it was a gross check that went to. So it was, it was a gross check that went to.
Yeah, it was in my payroll.
Yeah.
It's in the payroll, it went through the payroll.
It went through payroll.
That's how it happened before.
Did you pay tax on it?
Yep.
Yeah, whatever, I.
Yeah, yeah, and no, I'm, I'm, I'm not asking, it wasn't.
It wasn't separate, right?
No, it's coded stipend, no. Oy, 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 oy. It's coded stipend in the. Oh, it is, it is, oh, 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 okay, 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 okay.
Alright, so going forward, the cellphone line can get removed.
Cellphone line can be removed, yes.
And then. So that has to be, that thousand has to be back to.
Yeah, it has to go to twenty, yeah, until I find out the difference, I'll make a, I'll send out another email, I'll call her tomorrow.
So you're gonna have to take whatever you was thinking for radio, and you're gonna move it down to your radio line. So if you was thinking you was gonna spend a thousand on radio, it's gotta be down there.
Well, you didn't think so, though.
Yeah, I did, I, well, well, I just had a thousand dollars in there, I, I, honestly, I don't know. I don't know how much I wanna spend on it, but most of the money that we spend on radios are repairs, they're not purchases. We take them, well, we do a lot better now, cause we were using Witten's, which. We were taking it sideways using them, we switched to Yankee Communications out of Clinton, they treat us pretty good, but yeah, they repair all of them. And we pay for them to be repaired, that's why I'm saying, if there's an insurance, that says if you break your, lose your radio on a fire scene.
Yeah, I'll check with, like I said, I'll call.
You just gotta be careful too, cause some of that stuff, you use it too much, and then, you know, you're paying five grand a year.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah. Right, 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 that's the other thing, is find out.
I mean, I really like your in number, but this, we just kind of changed that a little bit by doing that, but.
Well, we can keep it the same, right, it's, it's, the only difference is, is I'm gonna lose a thousand dollars.
Yep, you are.
On, if you had, out, off the fifty-eight, three.
Yep.
Yep.
Thousand sixty to be exact.
So if you want, I mean. Do your homework, see what you can do between your training line and your Sunday duty, see if that twenty-six works.
I think it.
Because at the end of the day, I don't wanna, I don't wanna sit here next year and be having the same conversation, cause we went over by seventeen hundred.
We can't go over.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, we gotta have a real number that we're gonna hold.
Just, whatever number we end up with, we're gonna, we have to break out the over, so if we put, tell them sixty. We're, we're, it's gonna say seventeen of this is what we went over last year.
Right, yeah, that's how it works.
So.
So are we still gonna go with that number, or does that number now need to change where that mobile equipment just changed?
I'd really like to see sixty.
Well, I mean, I think we can keep it at sixty, just changes my budget.
Yeah, you make your numbers within their work, they're not gonna hold to it.
Yeah, because, I, I, the other reason I like, I know it's, sounds maybe like splitting hairs, but sixty really isn't sixty, because seventeen of it is from last year, so.
Right.
That we can kind of, everybody really tried their best.
Right.
I'm, I'm just looking at fifty, fifty-five, sixty.
But it's not.
Yeah, I understand.
Question, does, will that budget line say sixty now?
No, it'll say fifty-eight, cause we're gonna have to put that.
Seventeen, right.
Right, okay, okay, so that, that number sits somewhere, where, that number, as far as our overage, where does that go?
Gotta go on its own line.
It's gonna go on its own line on the, I kind of did an example, so you could see, we would have to do something like this. Okay, ah, oh, okay, I see how that works, and on this budget, on this here, on this spreadsheet, where does it go? You see what I'm saying, do you know, does everyone know?
No, I mean, I, I, I.
I mean, it's gotta be somewhere.
I don't know what your warrant requires.
No, because you already spent it.
I don't, I don't mind, if, if they'll let us put, fire department, sixty thousand, an asterisk seventeen hundred of which is.
From last year's budget, if we can do that, that's, I'm fine with that, whatever.
You're not gonna.
Refund it.
Right, cause you're spent.
It's already spent, we, we have to get the town to approve that, that seventeen hundred dollars.
Right. We need the money, cause, cause we spent it.
We signed it over, got it, okay, so it doesn't sit on this budget.
Yep, that's not really a real number, because it's already, doesn't exist.
Right, so really, your number, Chad, is fifty-eight.
Correct, fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, three hundred.
Three, yep.
And, and I get a, yeah, so I'm at fifty-seven, two forty when I put the ten sixty back on.
Right, well, that's a number we were, we're talking, but you can play with your labor.
I can play, I got fifty-eight, three to play with.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And once you break your labor out the way you did, if you come back to us and say, hey, I could do a little better, that'd be even better. But, if you can't, then it's gonna be what it's gonna be.
Yeah, it is, and it's an increase that is, I mean, nobody likes it, but at least, I mean, it's within the realm.
And I think that'll help you too, when you show that, that, hey, this is what we're gonna do, these are the, these are the savings, or this is.
What we can.
And you gotta remember in that line too, that includes the stipends, the wages and salaries.
Think another thing, the overage, the fact that we've addressed this with a new process is probably gonna help us. I mean, when people say, well, how come we, you know what, we're not gonna have that problem anymore, we've gone to a, a purchase order system. We're gonna keep tracking categories that's never been done before, so hopefully, we, this is the last time you see one of these.
Right.
That, so.
And your jockey involved in that as well. Tracking them.
Cause I wouldn't wanna be in your shoes.
And if I can start getting the paycheck monthly.
I, I have zero.
No, I.
No, I totally would not wanna do that.
And we don't have any, I don't have any accountability, I, you know, if you come to my house and say. Chad, how come you only get X amount of dollars in your checking, I can tell you, it's because I spent this, 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 this.
Right, right, right.
And I can't do that here, I don't, I don't like that feeling.
I totally, totally get it.
Yeah, I mean.
And then all of a sudden, the light bill comes in, it's like, we're done.
Yeah, right.
Honestly, that's what it's.
Someone calls and say, I, I need a P O and what's it on, and huh, right, and, and we pause.